The water environment. KWA, in partnership with WEF, is pleased to announce Scott Millholland as the 2020 Kansas recipient of this prestigious award. A Kansas native, Millholland grew up in Wyandotte County. He began his career with the City of Gardner in 1998 in the street department. During that time, he worked on a variety of street and non-street related projects where he gained a well-rounded knowledge of the operation and interrelationship of city departments. In 2000, Millholland transferred to the wastewater department and was a lead operator for eight years, working on lift stations, wastewater operations, and lab analysis. He received his Class Four Operator Certificate in 2004, and in 2011 was promoted to superintendent, overseeing the operation and maintenance of Kill Creek Water Resource Recovery Facility. In June 2013, TPO Magazine wrote an article on Kill Creek about a small but savvy team who sets an example with safety, training, energy savings, and biocallis process innovation. Under Millholland's exemplary leadership, the treatment plant has received the KWEA Plant of the Year Award four times, as well as the George W. Burke Safety Award. Both are examples of the dedication and incredible effort that he has put forth to go the extra mile and lead a very efficient operation. He is highly regarded in his profession among his peers. His leadership, exuberant spirit, and vast expertise make him a valuable asset to the City of Gardner. Millholland is very involved in the community, enjoys educating people on how wastewater treatment works, and promoting the benefits of reuse of wastewater ethylone. To that end, he frequently gives plant tours to schools and various organizations. So, again, on behalf of the Kansas Water Environment Association, I would like to present Scott Millholland with the William D. Hapfield Operator of the Year.
I'd ask William if he'd had some words to say to the group, but I know he's a man of few words, so.
What's that? What'd you say?
Do you have any, you have any words?
Well, I couldn't do it without a great staff. I'll tell you, if you don't have a good staff, you don't go anywhere. So, it's a great award. I'm extremely honored, but I owe a lot to the staff. You can't do it without a good staff, so congratulations to my staff.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. That is very prestigious and extremely, it's a great honor, a high honor for our organization and for you, Scott. So, thank you very much. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two revised budget. I'm going to ask Director Matt Wolf. We're going to find out just how wonderful our budget situation is.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight's budget update really has three major components. I'll be going over Senate Bill 13, our budget calendar and how it's changing. Also, I was going to budget policy a little bit and give you a preview of what's coming up in the next meeting. Senate Bill 13 is also known as Truth in Taxation. What it does is it repeals the tax lid, so the tax lid that we've been under the last few years is gone. In its place, it's establishing a base levy limit and additional hearing requirements for ad valorem property tax increases. It also includes a penalty of refunds if you fail to follow the procedure set in Senate Bill 13, and it's effective now and impacts the 2022 budget. Essentially, they're allowing governing bodies more flexibility on increasing the mill levy if that's their decision. They're just asking people to be transparent about it. Revenue neutral rate is defined as a tax rate for the current tax year that would give, that would generate the same property tax revenue as levied the previous tax year using the current tax year's total assessed valuation. To calculate the revenue neutral rate, the county clerk shall divide the property tax revenue for such taxing subdivision levied for the previous tax year by the total of the all taxable assessed valuation in such taxing subdivision for the current year, and then multiply the quotient by a thousand to express the rate in mills. In other words, they're going to look at the amount of property tax levied prior year. They'll be looking at the November tax abstract to find that number, and then they'll look at the new valuation estimate and basically automatically lower your mill levy to the revenue neutral rate, so you have this exact same amount of dollars you had the previous year. You cannot levy in excess of the R and R unless you follow the procedure in Senate Bill 13. The revenue neutral rate does not include any inflation factor. It does not include an exception for new improvements. It does not include any exception for TIF valuation increases. So, when you add like a new subdivision or an art TIF, if, say, Freddy's goes vertical or the other outlaying sites develop or they remodel the price shopper, it'll increase the city's valuation, but it doesn't allow you to capture any additional tax dollars. And we'd still be on the hook to also pay the developer the tax increment, essentially diverting it from our general fund or bond and interest. So, it's a recommendation to hold the R and R hearing if you're planning to exceed or maintain the R and R. And the resident that are recommending to me to hold it even if you're planning to maintain the revenue neutral rate is protect against basically a change in valuation from the estimate in June to November. The R and R is being calculated in June, and then if your valuation drops because of tax appeals or just a correction on the county's part, you could actually end up with less tax dollars than the prior year. What this does to the budget calendar is, under the new calendar, on June 15th, county clerks would calculate revenue neutral rate, send it to all the cities. We would then have to decide if we're planning to exceed the revenue neutral rate or maintain it and basically determine the date, time, and location of the new public hearing. On August 10th, the county clerks will consolidate all the required information for all taxing units on one notice and mail the email, or mail or email to all taxpayers. This will be sent out 10 days prior to the first public hearing date. This will not occur in 2022, but they basically will implement it next year. If we decide to hold the public hearing, to consider exceeding the neutral, the revenue neutral rate, we'll have to publish a notice 10 days in advance of the public hearing. And this public hearing must occur between August 20th and September 20th. Under this new procedure, the final deadline for the submitting the budget to the county is October 1st. If we decide not to hold that hearing and we go back to basically not hold the R and R hearing at all, we'd have to follow the old procedure, which is submitting the budget by August 25th. The R and R public hearing and budget public hearing can be held the same night. Both public hearings should be separate actions. And then the R and R public hearing must be held before the budget public hearing or any budget adoption. Once again, if you fail to follow the procedure, we could end up having to refund taxes next year. Regarding budget policy, we recently received some requests from Gardner Cemetery. The new budget requests from the cemetery were for 2021 and 2022. They originally requested $32,365 for both 2021 and 2022. They increased their 2021 budget after their original request, and please note that we typically pay 50% of their budget. The revised request for 2021 is for $37,675, an increase of $5,310. The 22 budget we received later that after, this afternoon, and that request is for $37,180. It's an amount slightly lower than the 2021 budget request. You should have a report that explains the increase in the 2021 budget before you. The primary reasons for the new budget request are to address the following issues. They increased the Sexton salary from $16,200 to $18,000. This was the first salary increase in five years. Printing and postage costs used to be absorbed by Bruce Funeral Home. The 2021 budget provides reimbursement for these costs. This increases cemetery associates' printing and postage costs from $150 to $2,500. The budget includes $1,600 for a new computer, software upgrades, and data entry services. Please note that some of these are one-time costs. There is also a $4,500 increase in annual mowing costs. The Gardner Cemetery is asking for basically the city council to consider this request, and they'd like to know where you stand on that tonight, so they know how to invoice the city. And then a kind of a preview for June 21st city council meeting. At that meeting is where we kind of really dig into the budget policy. I'll provide a revenue update that includes new valuation estimates. We had early valuation estimates back in February. It was around 9% valuation increase for the city. We'll have new ones in June. We'll also have the new revenue neutral rate, and then we'll also have new sales tax numbers with at least five months of data. With those kind of revenue components, they'll kind of help decide or guide period of policy decision-making. And then also at that meeting, we'll bring forward new position requests and also vehicle and equipment requests. So, at this time, I'd invite any questions you might have about tonight's presentation and also seek direction on Gardner Cemetery.
Thank you, Matt. I have a question right off the top of my head. So, let's go back to Slide 3, because this, this is, this is crazy. All right, so it does not include an inflation factor and does not include an exception for new improvements or development. Am I correct? So, we bring on a subdivision or three.
That's.
And that additional, that additional tax revenue is considered just part of the whole bunch, even though those structures didn't exist last year. And because they're adding to the revenue stream, the City of Gardner would actually be penalized for that because of the fact that it would go against our revenue neutral number, correct?
That's correct. Basically, it would increase our city's valuation, but our bill levy would be automatically lowered, so we collect the same tax dollars as the year before, which would essentially actually lower taxes on most households and all the.
Well, it would lower taxes on most households, but we'd still have to manage the infrastructure with the same amount of money, even though the infrastructure is going to be increased, and the amount of money we're investing on that infrastructure is going to be increased as well.
You're right. I mean, it's put a strain on basically public services and especially putting in new infrastructure to support growth. I mean, you basically wouldn't be capturing increased revenues to support the infrastructure and probably increased services.
And then the TIF valuations, that's a problem because obviously when they come off of TIF, that's the whole point of the incentive is to be able to, is to be able to get that money back after the TIF is completely expired, correct? And we're not going to get that now.
Yes, and that's what really shocked me was, I mean, you, we have a development agreement with a, you know, developer. There's an increment that's going to be generated. We're still required to pay that, but we don't automatically capture that unless you vote to actually go through that public hearing and all of that.
So, again, it puts another strain on the resources of the city, and basically what we're doing is we're keeping the developer who received the incentive now at that same level after the 10-year period expires, or you're going to spread that out. Is that correct?
Well, it would actually affect us earlier, like even like next year, we wouldn't collect the extra taxes for Freddy's, so, I mean, it's not even just after the 10-year period, it's right now.
So, it's even worse than that.
Yes, and the one thing I don't have for you tonight, and I, we posed this question to the state, is what about IRBs and tax abatements like the ones currently in the works, and we have not gotten any feedback on that yet.
So, the state hasn't given us any direction whatsoever as to exactly how that's going to be managed?
No, we asked that at a budget workshop on Thursday, and we haven't received a response yet. They're working on it, though.
I think I've set the table for the rest of the council. This is interesting. Yes?
So, Matt, what is our exposure between TIFs and industrial revenue bonds based on this new calculation?
Well, we don't know about the industrial revenue bonds yet because we don't know if that's included or not. I think we thought it actually might not be, we might not be penalized that way, but we're not certain of that yet. On the TIF, it's hard to tell, like, we know that thankfully the price shopper's already mostly on the tax rolls. It's really the new outlying lots are the biggest unknowns, and it's kind of what are those going to, you know, value at and what taxes would we possibly missing, be missing out on?
Yeah, my last question, thank you, Matt, would be, is there a list of levers that we could use, for example, IRBs that we don't know about yet, but do we have a list of levers that we could use for incentivizing while we collect the fruits of that incentive thereafter? So, are they only after TIFs as an example and not IRBs? So, therefore, we would push IRBs, again, as a tool versus TIFs?
That question's directed to me. I think Matt can go back to the definition. So, Matt and I were having a conversation about this today. The reason TIF is a problem is because even though we are, the city often, as part of a TIF, basically agrees that the increment from the base to whatever they ultimately build, that they will forego, that the city would forego the revenues from that ad form tax. In any TIF project currently, they still go through the assessment process, and so it still hits the rules. And that increased valuation still hits the rules, the tax rules. So, when you look at the definition here, and that's why I actually asked Matt to kind of include the formula in the second sentence there, it talks about the fact that you take all tax taxable assessed valuation. So, that increment is still taxable assessed valuation on the TIF. It's just we are in essence pursuant to the TIF statute agreeing to forego the revenue that we would otherwise be entitled to. Now, my question, which I don't know the answer to, I looked at LKM, they don't really have any guidance out on this point yet, is the IRB and the constitutional tax abatements. My understanding is that that does not count as taxable assessed valuation until, until the term of the IRB holds off, but, but I don't know that to be true. It's a function that's done at the county and the state level, and so I don't know that to be true. That's why we had the follow-up question.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes. So, if I'm understanding correctly, I mean, it's called a truth in taxation, but basically they're going to give you a number, and as long as you have a hearing and, and very carefully, you know, very clearly explain where you're increasing taxes or where you're increasing, you can proceed with that, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah, so as long as we agree to have a hearing, we can adjust as we need to, as long as we're responsible with it.
That's correct, and really, they're just getting at, they don't want cities capturing valuation growth without any notification required. So, basically, it's just requiring that public hearing, and then in the future, it'll be mailed out to each property or taxpayer.
So, our basic, the basic thing we'll say is it's organic development. We've got X number subdivisions that have been added to the, to the taxable value of the city and for X number of retailers, and we have to be able to support that growth.
Correct, and basically, I'm gearing that for a discussion at the next meeting when we have some of the, you know, these are the budget requests, these are our revenues. Where do you want to head with this, basically?
Yes, Matt, I'm Mark. It just sounds like there's a few questions to be answered, but in general, it's a good thing because now we have to justify why we're doing what we're doing. And I'm not terribly worried about the, not being on the, or the next slide where it talked about how you don't get that new improvements because you'll get it the following year.
No, you won't.
Sure you will. It'll be part of the assessed value at that point.
But your tax dollars are capped, basically.
Yeah, I get that.
It's, 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 you have to do this every year.
Yeah, you would, which is okay to tell the people why we're doing what we're doing every year. It, it'll be another thing we have to do, another step to the process, but other than the questions on the TIF and the IRBs, it doesn't really sound, sound all that bad. Now, I could see to Randy's point where we look at our development agreements and aren't so eager to put a road in before somebody else's point of moving the dirt on their side occurs, because now we're spending that money and not having any improvement for it. So, I could see where it tweaks that a little bit, but in general, it sounds okay.
Although I don't think that, that, that road was not put in with a TIF.
No, but just in general.
The road was put in with, with a, with a benefit district.
Sure.
And so, what, what you're saying is that from the standpoint of flexibility for financing some of these improvements, we are, it's going to have a chilling effect.
It could.
I think it definitely will have a chilling effect. So, the question is, you know, what we're trying to do here is because of the fact we can't bulldoze houses to add businesses, because it's not a zero-sum game here, what we're doing is we're actually trying to expand the pie in Gardner, so we have less of a portion of our tax revenues having to come from citizens. We're trying to bring in commercial, we're trying to bring in, you know, some white industrial, not warehouses, but, you know, we're trying to diversify that three-legged stool. What this is doing is kind of cutting that stool. It's, it's, it's going to create a chilling effect on, on incentivizing certain types of development because of the fact that we can't, you know, we're not, we're not going to be able to realize that additional revenue. You don't think so?
I, I get your point, and yeah, to some degree, like I said, but for the most part, we're still going to go forward with those same improvements because you have to to make that development happen. It's just going to be that we have to now explain it to people and say, we're going to spend X dollars on this road because this thing's coming in, instead of just we vote on the development agreement sometime and nobody knows why we did that.
So, we have to.
They, we put something in.
So, do we have to wait on those development agreements until budget time?
I don't think so. I think we're just going to have to keep track and be willing to, you know, the first year, we might want to be very cautious. But after that, I think you get into a flow of knowing what's happening when, and when the evaluation cutoff date is and so forth, and we roll with it.
Yeah, well, it looks like they're pushing back the budget submission deadlines by up to two months because of this. So, that's another concern, I guess, because is that, is that enshrined? Is the legislature now saying you don't have to have your budget done by August 31st?
Yes, they're basically giving us till October 1st if you follow this with an additional public hearing. Which, you know, in a positive side, gives us more time to get sales tax numbers and things like that.
We have another three months to, to work with.
And it doesn't mean we're losing out on this money, it's just we have to have a public hearing in order to get it, so, and that's just explaining to the citizens what's going on. Hey, your taxes aren't going to go up, yours are going to stay the same. It's just this big development that we came in, and here's what their valuation is, and so here's what our new tax base is. So, I don't know that we're really losing anything, it's just taking extra steps.
Well, what you could lose, lose is, right, the mills stayed the same, and the assessed value goes up, we get the difference, and, you know, oh, look, more money, and everybody goes, but assessed value went up, why didn't my mills go down, right? Zero sum to the people.
And, and that's fine. One of the reasons why we're doing what we're doing is to bring mills down to residences, so it's not, that's not an issue. It's just right now, as we're moving in the direction of getting those projects done, we're in a tough spot where we have money going out to get the infrastructure improvements in place, to support the commercial development, which is right now, there's empty lots on the south side of town that will be filled within the next two years, but they're not filled yet. So, now we're in a.
Yeah, I think the first couple, one or two years could be a little interesting as far as how we manage this, but long-term, it's a good thing.
I would tend to think that places that are more mature in terms of their growth patterns would probably have an easier time than we.
So, sticking with our two-year budget cycle is still ideal with SB 13?
We just have to have a separate hearing, right, every year?
Yeah, in Kansas, you really only technically have a single year budget. That's why we're formally adopting the 2022 one this year. Sticking with the two-year, if that's what council wants to do, it can't help with planning.
I assume just about every city can have a hearing.
What I've heard in Johnson County at least, that's the case.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a managers' meeting on Friday, and nobody indicated that they were planning on cutting mills for this year. So, and, and that impacts us as well because the mill rate impacts how much we get for county taxes, for use tax, and those things as well.
That's another question that came up. This is, is this only affecting municipalities, or is it also affecting school districts, fire districts, and counties?
I believe it's affecting most. The school district, I think it's affecting in a slightly different way, but I think most people are affected.
Yeah, we found out at the fire, fire district meeting last Tuesday, it's affecting them. Maury was at the meeting for some clarification.
The summary from the legislature states that it applies to cities, counties, and certain federal departments, and other municipalities.
But because.
Municipality is a broad term in Kansas law. It can include other taxing, subdivisions.
Just wanted to make that clear for folks watching. But the county, but the, 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 the school boards are in a different spot because they have a certain baseline, and their mills guaranteed by state statute. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, schools have different, different mills that they can levy. Yeah, I mean, they have new bond issuances for capital improvements, and then they have, you know, in terms of operationally, that'll, that goes to the state, and the state runs it through, in the case of that.
Thank you for the presentation. Anybody else have questions?
Is everybody good with the cemetery, please?
Yeah, we need to talk about cemetery.
Oh, yeah, cemetery, forgot about the cemetery, yes. So, questions?
Yeah, my first question, Matt, would be, what are the one-time costs? I know I emailed you and Jim about it, and you responded, which I appreciate, but I was looking for one time of X and year-over-year of Y. So, what is, what is the one-time?
One thing I do want to mention is we also have Mike Casey here tonight from Gardner Township Board, so he might be able to help answer some of these questions, but my understanding was it was for a new computer and maybe some software upgrades? Two computers.
So, $800 for software licenses? What, what are we talking about there? It's $790, is any, software annual updates in support of.
Oh, I, I was looking at the next page, computer upgrades, software.
Yeah, well, this is for operating expenses.
Sexton, Sexton's computer.
Yeah.
Those are the one-time? The second page?
Yes, yes, the one-time were individual computers. There were two of those.
Thank you. So, $1,100.
Anything else?
It seems reasonable. We've always supported the cemetery, I think.
I think that the, the question, the, the issue is really more, we're assuming is the, some of the expenses that were previously handled by the funeral home, so we'll be, we would be taking all those on as well.
Yeah, Mike, I've got two other questions, Mayor. What drove the printing and postage cost up from $150? You can step to the podium, sir. From $150 to $2,500?
And I'm Mike Casey with newly appointed to the township board in the treasury position. So, my predecessor was a part of that budget process. There was an explanatory document that with regards to the printing cost is that printing had been absorbed by the funeral home, and they were looking to start reimbursing the funeral home. In addition to that, they also were printing some large poster-size maps, if you will, for the cemetery, so there was increased cost there. And I know that we're asking for an increase in the middle of the budget year. My understanding, from what I've seen, is that the 2020 budget numbers were not presented, they were not raised to the 2021 budget. So, when it comes time to bill for the 50% of the 2021 budget, it was more than what you had in your 2021 budget. So, that appears to be an oversight on our part. So, it, the budget dollars that you had in your budget did not represent the increase in the Sexton salary, those printed costs, and also you'll note the mowing contract price. So, there were three kind of significant jumps from the prior year. And the 2022 budget that we have represents a $110 increase in software maintenance fee, and then we, we just approved that budget, and it, the one-time expenses were removed so that that budget for 2022 is actually lower than 2021.
And I appreciate Bruce's, Bruce's funeral home in Shirley for all their support over the years, which obviously precedes me. Was there more land acquired as to the increase in the mowing budget line item?
I've got with me the president of the township that might have some institutional knowledge of that.
David Wolf, I'm the trustee of the township board. The increase is in spray and fertilizer. We were, we were doing one a year at one time, and it's just increased because of the keeping up, yeah, and keeping up with the dandy lines out there. So that was the, that's the other big part of that increase.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mm-hmm.
Direction on this?
I'd support it.
I'm good with it. All the items totally funded as currently laid out? All right, I think we got direction, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the public comments section of our meeting. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to make comments about city matters or items on the agenda that are not part of a public hearing. There's only a couple of ground rules for this particular segment. One is that there's a time clock on the left hand side as you're looking at us, and my right. It's a five-minute time limit. If you please wish to speak, please keep your comments under that five minutes. The city clerk will keep the clock. Also, no profanity and no personal attacks. If you have multiple individuals coming up on a specific topic, please try to speak on a different aspect, if you could, please. So with that being said, I will open the floor for public comment. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Denidri Herbert, 223 West Main, Gardner. Mark, thank you for the, for talking about SB 13 and speaking on behalf of the taxpayers. I actually covered that very carefully, went to every single hearing. It's good, it's good legislation, maybe it needs tweaked for your purposes, but I really think it's important that taxpayers hear the other side, which is, maybe we should know what you're spending the extra money on. That's actually not why I'm here, and I do want to say that I am speaking on behalf of myself only, not in any professional capacity, just as a Gardner resident and taxpayer. So I watched the last city council meeting with grave disgust, actually, when I saw the plans, the table scraps that the council and the city plans to throw to Gardner's children this summer. Fomites are not major drivers of transmission of COVID, so there's no need to close the pool every two hours to sanitize, and removing all the deck furniture is nothing but theater. The Johnson County Health Department, the CDC, and the WHO are very quickly recommending that capacity limits in outdoor venues are no longer necessary, as we, the science is showing that outdoor transmission is not, it's not really a thing. There's exactly one study in the entire world, actually, and the New York Times reported about this last week, that suggests that outdoor transmission may occur. That sole study revealed a handful, less than a handful, of COVID transmissions between construction workers in Singapore. And the study wasn't very clear on how much of the construction site was enclosed at the time of transmission, whether or not they rode to work together or to the construction site. All of this is to say is, it appears outdoor transmission is a statistical anomaly. The Kansas Legislature has limited liability for organizations and businesses for the possible transmission that may occur on their properties, so you're not going to be sued if somebody gets COVID at the swimming pool. This community, between the school board and the city council, have robbed the children in this town of a full year of education and counting, and of educational and recreational opportunities, and you have the ability to start limiting some of that damage right now this summer by opening the pool without these ridiculous rules. Poor kids are hurt the most by this political ridiculous theater. They don't have backyard swimming pools. They don't have parents that can take them to the downtown country club, or to the neighbors, to, well, their neighbors don't have swimming pools, but to a friend's pool. Their parents work during the day, so they can't take them to the next town where the pools are open with more reasonable rules. And they likely don't live in subdivisions with HOAs and swimming pools. How long are you going to damage the poor kids in this community? They are the ones who will bear the brunt of these ridiculous rules. Everyone over the age of 12 who wants a vaccine is eligible to receive one at this point. And for those under the age of 12, let me provide you with a simple statistic. If you are under 18 and not vaccinated, you are safer, safer, than a vaccinated person over the age of 30. That's the math. That's the science. At this point, it's more than apparent that exercise and sunshine are excellent immunity builders, particularly for fighting COVID and bad outcomes of the disease. I remind you that last summer, your Parks and Rec Department used their time and our taxpayer resources to put police tape on city playground equipment, instead of working tirelessly to provide the absolute best services to the children of our community. And by the way, last summer, we knew that fomites were not major, major drivers of transmission, and we knew that kids were unlikely to catch the disease, and if they did, they were unlikely to have bad outcomes. So I'd prefer that our city staff spend their time trying to provide the best services instead of looking for ways to not do the job we're paying them to do. Which brings me to why I'm here. I know all of these things, and I have no desire to stand before you tonight. It's not my job to tell you these things, it's your staff's job. And if they're not doing it, if they're not the ones bending your ears telling you the ways that they can provide the best services to this community, then you need to hire a different staff. And by the way, no one, no one in Gardner elected you to be a rubber stamp for bad ideas from the bureaucrats in this town. It's time to put an end to this political theater. I deserve better. I don't want to be here. Gardner taxpayers deserve better, better. And quite frankly, Gardner kids deserve better. So open the pool and drop the nonsense.
Thank you, Denidri.
Sure.
I think we'll have a discussion on that later on tonight, so.
I agree.
Absolutely. Anyone else coming forward for public comments? All right, seeing none, I'll go on to the consent agenda. Is there any member of the council who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Number six and seven.
Number six and seven. All right. Anyone else? I want to entertain a motion on consent agenda items one through five.
So moved.
Second. Motion, Deaton, second winters, that we approve consent agenda items one through five. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? Consent agenda items one through five pass. Consent agenda item number six, consider authorizing the execution of a contract with Phoenix Concrete LLC for the 2021 pavement management program for concrete. Councilman Gregor-Sick.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got two questions, and Jim and I have covered this, so it should be fairly easy. Has the concrete work from previous phases been corrected? I believe former Councilman Moore brought this up. I toured several of the neighborhoods, including my own, over a lunch break, and see the same shoddy concrete work between the curb, existing and new, and asphalt roadway.
So you're talking about the Willow Springs, or you're talking about-
All, all over.
All over.
Yeah.
Okay. There have been some questions before about-
I just sent that response, everybody get my, you read it?
Sure. For the record?
It's up to Jim, I just-
Everybody's got it. If you want me to read it, I'll read it.
I'm good.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Sharon can put it in meeting minutes then. The next one is, what steps have been taken to consider funding for concrete, of course, and asphalt, maintenance repairs, preparation? Again, we're five years ahead, so I'm trying to be proactive here, on that special tax sunsetting. I think that's a conversation, and I do appreciate Jim's response to those two questions.
Yeah, and we have talked about that internally, about the loss of that revenue. If you recall, there was no infrastructure funding in our general fund before we passed the tax. So to absorb one, $2 million of annual funding into the general fund would be a very heavy burden, especially with the conditions of, for example, 167th Street and some of the needs and infrastructure that we have going forward. So as we get closer, and we're able to identify the impact of Senate Bill 13, and how we're going to budget for those things moving forward, and how we set our priorities with parks and roads and everything else that we're responsible for, we would have some tough decisions to make. I think that it's, it's practical to probably, if the council decides to go back to the voters, to renew the tax, to do it at least two years early, so that we can prepare for the possible loss of that revenue. But we are mindful that that's a possibility.
And to your point, Jim, I mean, on a positive side, that is being funded largely by non-Gartner residents?
I don't, I wouldn't say largely.
Some.
Some.
Yeah, some of it is, and it's, it's very common in Johnson County and also in Lawrence and Topeka to have an infrastructure sales tax to fund infrastructure improvements, so.
So whether we're looking at the left side or the right side, I don't mean that politically. Both sides of the coin, maybe it'd be a better way. I just want to stay ahead of this, we have five years to cuss and discuss it, to understand what those revenue streams are, and of course, in light of the SB 13, I get all the moving pieces to this, but I just want to keep it fresh, so that we don't come into, you know, a year out from that sunsetting and scrambling, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
I don't think there was even a consideration to leave it until 2024, 2025 to address, but...
Well, we talked about doing a work session.
Yeah.
We were talking about it, like-
Then we needed to replace Public Works Director, so-
Correct.
I think we'll still do it.
Sure.
So 2022, I think, is when we were looking to see what the impact was going to be, and then consider a ballot measure, if needed, to be able to fund the extension. So, yes, there was, there was discussions ongoing on that.
Mayor, my last question was on number seven.
Can I, we have to take action on number six first.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. Any other, consider, any other questions on, on the concrete contract? Okay. No issue with, with the vendor, correct? This is not the same vendor as we had last year. All right, thank you. I want to entertain a motion on consent agenda item number six.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Gregor-Sick, second Deaton, that we authorize the city administrator to execute a contract with Phoenix Concrete LLC for the 2021 pavement management program for concrete. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, any abstentions? Consent agenda item number six passes. Consent agenda item number seven, consider authorizing the purchase of 8,000 gallons of fuel for the Gardner Municipal Airport. Mr. Gregor-Sick.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, Jim, thank you for your answer, but the question was, was number seven, the purchase of 8,000 gallons, sent out to RFP, and as you indicated, in the CAF, it allowed the sole-source vendor, you know, as outlined in that document, but I still wanted to bring that up, just, just because I think that the free market can sometimes drive a better cost, or, excuse me, a better price to the end user.
Is this, is this, so, we have, we've handled our bulk purchases this way for several, for several years.
So, so Kellen located a waiver to competitive bidding that was signed by Cheryl and Michael, that was a little dated, so we redid that, but we have a branded fuel system, so we would have to change the pump and those things, and Kellen indicated that because of the fuel needs that we have, that this was the only vendor that is available at this time to serve both those needs. So we can reassess that when we go forward.
There may, there may be no value, but 8,000 gallons of fuel is pretty substantial, so.
Yes, it is. All right. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
From anyone else? Okay. I want to entertain a motion on consent agenda item number seven.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Gregor-Sick, second Deaton, that we authorize the purchase of 8,000 gallons of fuel for the Gardner Municipal Airport. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, any abstentions? Consent agenda item number seven passes. Move on to the planning and zoning consent agenda. Planning and zoning consent agenda item number one, consider accepting the dedication of right-of-way easements on the final plat of Willow Chase 6. Since this consent agenda item, it's the only one on the agenda, I will just go straight to a vote. All those in favor indicate, oh, sorry, a motion, you have a motion on the-
A point of order, sir.
I'm sorry.
I have a question on that item.
Oh, did you want to remove it from the consent agenda?
I do.
All right. All right.
We'll-
Remove it then. We can go on ahead and start the discussion.
Okay. Again, Jim, I presented this question to you, I'm not so worried about the trees, I just wanted to cover the crosswalk, understanding that that thoroughfare is fairly active.
So I'll, I'll just read from my notes. The developer is not required to be asked to provide the crosswalk or sidewalk on the east side of Moonlight. That sidewalk kind of hangs out there a little bit, we're going to have to figure out what to do with that. We are not planning east-west pedestrian crossing at 183rd, but the Safe Routes to School Project will be providing east-west crossing at White Drive, which is to the north.
Yeah, I mean, we've seen what, I think Melton and I were able to support on 183rd, and I just know that that traffic is no different further east.
Except that, except that Moonlight Road is a very heavily-traveled thoroughfare north-south, and it's got a blind curve, so.
Correct.
If anything, if anything, it's a lot worse, but the problem here is that, that particular sidewalk is so far down below grade, it would be very, very difficult to even utilize that sidewalk. It's, as I said, it just hangs out there, and there's not really anything we can do with it.
Yeah, hence my questions.
All right. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. I want to entertain a motion on planning and zoning consent agenda item number one.
So moved.
Second. Motion, Gregor-Sick, second winters, that we accept the dedication of right-of-way easements on the final plat of Willow Chase 6. Since this was a unanimous vote on the part of the planning commission, it would take a two-thirds majority to change it, so just mentioning that. We do not have to have a voice vote, a roll-call vote, but that, if I deem that it's necessary, we'll do that. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? Planning and zoning consent agenda item number one passes. Nothing on old business, new business item number one. Consider adopting an ordinance condemning land for the US-56 Highway Pavement Reconstruction Project. Chief Engineer Tim McElDowney, good evening, sir. I know you've been working really hard on this with KDOT, so.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. So, yeah, back in December, I brought to you a resolution for the first step of condemnation on this project, and since that time, we've hired Dennis Keegan as our acquisition agent, and he's been working with all of the property owners along the corridor to acquire easements and right-of-way, and to this point, we, he's been making progress, we've probably got about half of the easements acquired, and so at this point, I think it's appropriate that we, we take the next step, which is the ordinance I'm bringing to you tonight, which would actually give us the authority to proceed with condemnation on, on individual properties, which I think we really need to do at this time. I would say, though, that really the, the negotiation is a big going well, they've just been going slow, and we're just at a point where we need to, to get the ball rolling and really set a timeline and, and be able to finish the negotiations.
So from this point of view, 60 days to this, from this date, we would have an answer, either we come to a settlement, or we go in a, is that correct? We have a 60-day timeline here?
No, this is just going to, so that we can send the letter out to get their attention, to get them to the table.
Correct.
So, yeah, the condemnation process usually takes 60, 90 days, but we're not starting that tomorrow.
Okay. Because we understand, we've got a, we've got a construction start date happening-
Right.
-in August, so we would have to wrap this up before then, obviously.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and for the temporary easements, I mean, we have other options. I mean, we could try to go back and do some redesign to avoid needing the easements if we really run into a snag with those, but again, it's, we haven't really run into anybody that's digging their heels in, it's just been getting things going.
Okay, great. All right. Any public comment on new business item number one? Seeing any, any further questions from council for staff?
Mayor, was your point about the timeline that the letter would go out and say, we need to resolve this by the end of the month? Because otherwise, we have authority to start the process for June and July.
Correct, and that's what I'm saying, is that-
That, I think that's what-
I just want to make sure that the timetables are such that if we start this process, we'll have enough time to get it resolved before we start the actual construction. So, one way or another.
Right, right.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? I want to entertain a motion on ordinance number 2702.
So moved.
Sorry. Motion, Deaton, second Gregor-Sick, that we adopt ordinance number 2702. An ordinance condemning land for the location, laying out, construction, reconstruction, operation, use, maintenance, and repair of a roadway improvement project known as the US-56 Highway Pavement Reconstruction Project, located within the city of Gardner, Johnson County, Kansas, and directing the city attorney, as Institute eminent domain proceedings is provided by law to acquire the tracts and parcels of land described in this ordinance. Institute eminent domain proceedings is provided by law to acquire the tracts and parcels of land described in this ordinance. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Winters?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregor Sik?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Deaton?
Yes.
Ordinance 2702 passes. New business item number two. Consider authorizing the execution of an amendment to the engineering services contract with George Butler and Associates for the preliminary design of a new south wastewater treatment plant utilities. Director Gons Garcia.
Good evening again.
Yes.
I provided additional information, a wastewater treatment plan timeline, and some scenarios that are being proposed as part of the amendment. Yeah, I would like to do a, do a brief, uh, review of how we got to this point. March 31st, 2019, HDR completed the wastewater master plant, and it was the first time it was identified the, uh, south wastewater treatment plant. However, the master plan was primarily focused on the collection system to accommodate growth within the existing service area. Uh, March 2020, HDR completed an anti-degradation review for KDHE. We never got a formal response from KDHE. Then July 6th, 2020, GBA city staff met with KDHE. Uh, KDHE indicated no more than 750,000 gallons can be, uh, uh, discharged directly to Hillsdale Reservoir. In addition, they requested two additional alternatives to the, uh, anti-degr, uh, study. Uh, mainly, the first one was pumping northeast to the, uh, Wolf Creek, and then pumping east to, uh, Sweetwater Creek, which is by, um, Spring Hill. We retained GBA to complete the addendum to the, uh, uh, anti-deg study because HDR did not respond to our, uh, inquiries. By, uh, August 3rd, 2020, GBA contracted with the city for the preliminary design of the south wastewater treatment plant. In 20 January this year, GBA completed the addendum to the anti-deg, uh, uh, study or review. Due to the, uh, KDHE response, GBA provided s- south wastewater treatment plan alternative cost comparison evaluating the associated treatment plant cost to serving the southeast planning area with Kill Creek. It will be like a Kill Creek expansion versus the s- south wastewater treatment plant. However, this evaluation did not include any analysis of the existing collection system to convey wastewater flow from the planning area through the existing system. The amendment to the original scope of work will model the existing and proposed improvements required to develop the southeast planning area along with the fundings needed and timeline for those improvements. This work will include detailed alternative to the south and east lift station sites, alternate routes, timelines, and financial impacts to the city wastewater fund. The original contract was have to $388,172, and there's a remaining balance of $160,000. The amendment will add $98,458 to the project for a grand total of $486,630. Tonight, we have, uh, Tim Schnellar and Tom Sla- Slaughter Stolter from GBA to answer any of the, any question you may have regarding the, uh, amended scope of work.
Alright, thank you, Gons, appreciate that. Open up for public comments very quickly here, and then we'll move into the questions. There's quite a few. Uh, any public comments on, uh, new business item number two? Seeing none, any questions for, uh, Gons? I, I believe you have a, a presentation potentially from the.
We, we have, uh, any questions you may have?
Any questions, okay.
There's additional information provided on the different scenarios they're proposing, so if you have any questions or any more explanation, we're happy to answer them.
We'll definitely have a lot more questions, I think. Start with, uh, this side. Any, any questions? You have any questions? I know you do, Mark.
My first question would be, which of the three hydraulic model scenarios are we thinking is most viable?
That will be determined.
I knew I could count on Mark.
So we are gonna be evaluating all three of the options. Um, at this time, we don't really have a favorable. If you look at the long-term, um, viability, the south wastewater treatment plant is the more favorable option. It's just how can we fund this, um, and have future development pay for some of these improvements? Because it's a substantial cost in order to construct the gravity sewers going down there, as well as the, um, the potential force main that would be needed to pump effluent from the south wastewater treatment plant over to Spring Hill, and that was kind of what KDHE is limiting us on. They say that we can discharge, um, approximately a little less than 1 MGD to Hillsdale Reservoir, but since it's a, a regional water supply, they're really limiting the amount of effluent that is going there. And Edgerton is running into the same issue as they try to expand their plant right now, and, um, in order for long-term growth of the southeast area, um, they're, they're stating that a force main would need to be constructed toward, in order to pump that effluent elsewhere around Hillsdale Reservoir. And so the hydraulic modeling options are split into really three overall categories. One is really just looking at the short term, which would be, um, the peritrace force main that's about to be constructed, and, um, right now, it's gonna be sending flow to the east lift station, and the east lift station actually splits flow pumping to the north and to the south lift station. And so we're gonna be evaluating what different, I guess, diversion percentages we could pump north versus south in order to possibly mitigate some of the improvements that were identified in the, um, master plan as part of those bottlenecks. And then the other two broader op, or, uh, hydraulic modeling scenarios are more long-term, and that's, um, basically the Kill Creek plant to serve the planning area versus the south wastewater treatment plant. And for the Kill Creek plant, a new pump station would need to be, uh, constructed towards the, uh, bottom of the planning area. It's known as the Cedar Niles Lift Station, and we'll be reviewing options either pumping from there to the south lift station or around it to possibly mitigate some of those other improvements. And then the final would be, uh, long-term solution about constructing a south wastewater treatment plant and, uh, possibly offloading the east and/or south lift station in, in order to, um, possibly, uh, delay the Kill Creek expansion, because the Kill Creek plant is about 80% capacity right now, and so it is going to need upgrades in the future.
Okay, thank you. Kind of caught between a rock and a hard place because of KDHE's requirements.
Have we gotten any feedback from KDHE on what they'll let us do with Kill Creek in the future?
So we have had those discussions with, uh, KDHE, and we, we actually were going to suggest to them possibly delaying the, um, nutrient limits that would, uh, need to be met with the next permit if we expand Kill Creek right now. So that was one of the, uh, things that we're gonna evaluate. Or possibly propose to KDHE.
But that still limits us to a certain extent in terms of growth in the southeast quadrant.
Right, that's still.
I mean.
Right.
750 MGD, right?
Yep.
Well, well, it's not just that, it's the, it's, it's, it's the effluent issue, so I mean, we could expand Kill Creek, but we'd have to run additional parallel lines there. We'd have to do a lot of, a lot of, uh, infrastructure work that's base infrastructure that we wouldn't have to do necessarily with a, with a new wastewater treatment plant. If we could find a way to pipe that effluent and not have to use Hillsdale, that would be, to me, the most obvious solution, or maybe. For the long term. I mean, obviously, for the short term, this is something we're gonna be doing anyway, so we, we understand that. But the long-term solution really comes down to, are we gonna expand Kill Creek? Are we gonna bu- build a wastewater treatment plant and then move that effluent someplace else?
Right, and our focus of the study is really to provide like a timeline of when these improvements would be needed, because I, I know you need to start budgeting for these.
Yeah, the real problem is just KDHE won't let us go.
Right.
I know we've also had some discussions about, you know, we do have unused capacity over at the Big Bull Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, and that is, that is something that's an option. Anything that's on the table is.
Which includes half the capacity for any expansion.
Correct.
But they're running into the same problem for expansion.
Well, there are permits for a million gallons, and it's only a half-million gallon plant, so they don't have to go back and get a new permit.
Right, but that only gets us.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it gets us a half.
I mean, that's great short term, but.
Half of that, which would be 250,000 more.
Right.
So we'd have half a million gallons there, and then if you had the 750,000 gallons with the south wastewater treatment plant, guess what? You've got a million and a quarter.
Yeah.
That definitely gets us quite a ways towards what we're looking for.
That, that gets you.
While we're waiting on future growth.
It gets you a little bit early, but long-term, we're coming right back to the table for three, four.
Absolutely, we're coming back to the table, but we have some options, is what I understand. Yeah, we're being forced into a corner. Yep. That's what KDHE is doing.
Ryan, is there any lobby efforts with respect to this hot, uh, this subject with those back roof? Because we can't be the only ones on this island.
With who, KDHE?
Yeah.
Oh. I, I, I mean, that's a little bit beyond what anything I've ever done.
Okay.
In terms of political lobby. Yeah, we, we've actually discussed lobbying efforts regarding this and an army of other issues that, uh, you know, we've identified.
So just for, you know, to make us all sleep better, what kind of numbers are we looking at for not going to Hillsdale? Because it sounds like that's off the table, right? So to go to Sweetwater or even Converver.
Yeah.
Even north, what, what kind of increase are we talking just in piping?
I mean, actual cost of piping?
Yeah, and I'm not gonna hold you to this number, I just want to.
It was in the anti-deg study. I just cannot remember it off the top of my head. I don't know.
About 6 million.
6 million?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just in piping? Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
We have to live. That's just to, for the. Just to pump it to Sweetwater, and then there's jurisdictional issues, right-of-way or, or easement issues as well.
There's also the option potentially of going up to, uh, either the Cedar Creek watershed or Kill Creek watershed. There's options there.
And we had looked at the Cedar Creek, um, watershed, and there was some difficulties with that because it drains to Olathe Lake, I believe. Yep, and they have similar, similar nitrification or utrification issues there.
Somehow we have to get past the reservoirs, so we've got.
Right.
Got Olathe Lake, we've got Cedar, Little Cedar Lake, too, and I think it's part of the same watershed. So we'd have to go north of Gardner Lake, north of Cedar Lake, north of Olathe Lake. That's a, that's a big haul.
You're going to Kansas River at that point.
You're darn close. You're going to Kill Creek is what you're doing, which is where the effluent's going anyway. Kill Creek wastewater treatment plant, so.
This, this would potentially open up that whole quarter, correct, I mean?
Yes. That's the whole reason why we decided to go with the south wastewater treatment plant option.
Yeah, this just gives us a clearer picture of where we need to go and a timeline for it.
Right.
Helped us out in the meantime.
Got a lot to sort out.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it. Alright, any other questions or comments or discussion? I'll entertain a motion on new business item number two.
So moved.
Go ahead. Motion Deaton, second, Winters, that we authorize the city administrator to execute an amendment to the engineering contract with GBA for preliminary design of a new south wastewater treatment plant to include a collection systems evaluation to serve the southeast planning area for the amount of $98,458. I think it's not to exceed, correct? Alright, um, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? New business item number two passes. That's the end of regular business. One of the council updates. Does staff have anything for council?
Mayor?
Yes.
I do need to ask you all to speak into your microphones.
Okay.
People are at home having a hard time hearing you, so get close. I know they're staring to get close.
Yep. Mark, Mark is great with this, so.
Aye.
Yeah, but you, you use your dad toys, but, you know.
I do well in the haunted houses.
You actually do pretty well, yes, I, I would agree. Alright, let's move on to, uh, council updates. Um, does staff have anything for council? I'm gonna start with Chief Belcher, because he's got a big grin on his face.
We have a CPAC meeting Monday, May 24th at 7:00 PM at, uh, the Justice Center, so that's the only thing repeating, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Finance Director Wolf.
Nothing for tonight.
Okay, you'll have plenty next week.
Well, we'll actually get a second meeting in June.
Oh, second meeting in June, okay. Alright, uh, city clerk, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to skip you. Anything?
Not for me.
Okay. Deputy City Administrator Nasta.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing, okay. Uh, city attorney.
Nothing for me.
Still didn't hear you.
Nothing for me.
Alright, uh, city administrator Pruding.
Yeah, I appreciate Dinedri's comments and the passion she has for this issue. I think we all know that we're pretty divided still as a country on where we land with mask and with COVID, and, and I can tell you that Jason has worked tirelessly to try to find the, the, the proper space to operate in. Uh, we did not go into pool season wanting to restrict or close the pool. Um, all our conversations were to, to make it as, as open as possible, and with the information we had at the time, which was three, four weeks ago, I mean, that's what we did now. We all got thrown a curveball a few days ago when they opened up for indoor and outdoor, which really changed things. Um, but one of the, the issues that we had discussed with the session passes was is we had the option of changing that if it came to the point where we do daily passes. But now, of course, we've got a, a pool that we're, we're trying to get just so we can open. So appreciate the comments, the passion, but I, I promise you that staff is not working to limit things on the low end. We're trying to do everything we can, um, to make sure that everybody has the services that they want and that they deserve.
And, and, and I totally get where Dinedri's coming from with regards to the kids in the community. They've been, they've been absolutely savaged for over a year now between the school issues and the, and the recreation, you know, parks and other things because of COVID. Also, we need to understand that we didn't have a ton of flexibility on this because of the fact that we were following a lot of the county guidelines. The guidelines now have completely changed in the last two weeks, and it's kind of moved on a dime with CDC and then the, then the state, things just kind of, kind of snowballed very quickly. So the question I have for you, Jason, is given the new guidance, given what we've gotten from the, over the last week or so, is there any possibility that we could reexamine the current processes that we had in place as of our discussions a couple of weeks ago, and I know it's been two weeks and things have just completely changed, but is there, is there anything that we can do on our end to maybe look at exploring, uh, modifying the, uh, the restrictions?
So we haven't received anything from the county health department.
Okay.
As far as aquatics is concerned, uh, usually they give us, so they gave us, uh, information back in March on how to reopen pools, and then when the county commissioners came out, um, after the mask mandate and everything, they came out with some, um, recommendations, not mandates or anything. So we're still kind of waiting to hear what the county has to say now, and the CDC hasn't updated their pool guidance information, I believe. I checked last week, I think it was February, so, you know, we're still, you know, leaning on the, the professionals who are, we use our guidance for. So not to say it can't change down the road, but, you know, given the tight timeframe that we're on, the sessions and, you know, the, the COVID guidelines and things that we're trying to reopen as safe as possible, because yes, there is a difference of opinions, but in talking with other agencies across the metro and us trying to, you know, get something put together in place so we can move forward is what we're doing. You know, start the season, not to say it can't change later on.
Sure, I, I think there's some groundswell of folks within the community that would love to just see the place to open up. Obviously, we have guidance from other agencies that we're trying to follow, and I don't think there's any place in the metro that's open up wide open. Have they? I mean, I, I.
Not specifically?
Pools, pools specifically. I don't think, I don't think there.
I don't think so.
Not even Black Box A.
I think everybody's trying to catch up with the guidance, because I think everybody was caught off guard.
Yes.
So my, I anticipate just from reading the information that they put out that they're gonna open it up. That's, that's what I think's gonna happen. So, and again, it's too late to do pool passes, but we could do if we have the staff.
So, and again, it's too late to do pool passes, but we could do if we have the staff because we were short-staffed on lifeguards.
Yep.
If we have the staff and we have the capability, we can work towards that. But we're going to have to evaluate that going forward.
And that's one of our biggest concerns is no matter if that pool's open for two hours or eight hours, you still require the same number of staff, you know, to safely operate, uh, from a lifeguard standpoint because you have so much coverage. So yes, it, it could change down the road, but like I said, we felt this is the best way to start. And yeah, our focus right now is, is making sure we have enough staff.
Yeah.
So what's the temperature of the elected?
So I called Jason about this a couple of weeks ago. Can you imagine that? And, you know, it's taxpayer subsidized, right? We lose almost half a million dollars a year on this.
Stay focused.
And.
I am.
And my concern was that the people that are going to come for those two hours are the same people that will probably come for a day. And the people that aren't going to come for two hours are the same people that are going to stay home. So I'm all for opening it a hundred percent. But at that time, the concern with the lifeguards having enough was an issue. So I felt that their plan of doing the two hours actually works better because you could scale it back and say, we're only open six hours this day. Or whatever, because of a staffing issue. And we can always change it in the future. So I said, I'd be checking in on it. Do I like it a, you know, it's the best solution? I don't think so. But I think it's a great way to get us open and doing something with it rather than it sitting there, you know, losing even more money.
I think I mentioned this when we were talking about the trash, big trash pickup. The most complaints I had this year was that we didn't open the pool. So I would, I would hope that, I know we have some guidelines right now, but as soon as we can maybe have staffing and have training, et cetera, and open it up more, I would be for it. Safely, safely. I want to make sure we have enough lifeguards, et cetera, but.
Sure.
Mayor, I guess my, and I've been in conversations with Jason, but on a different subject within the pool arena. The county commissioners have made a recommendation, correct?
Not on pools, but they've made a, they've made recommendations of masks and gatherings, yes.
Okay, which would essentially affect our pool decision?
I think the, the county reacted to the CDC guidelines and lifted, so there's no county order. It's all recommendations.
From CDC that we're playing off of?
Yes.
Okay.
And I can tell you from dealing with this issue from other jurisdictions, um, coming into the vote that they took to extend the health order or not, basically the, who I was, who we were communicating for this other jurisdiction said, we'll wait until the vote. Because their only restrictions were, were for, for the pools, although, you know, when you applied it to the pools, you know, they had kind of a different practical meaning was the mask gathering, the masking, all that. So with that not in place, my understanding is it's simply a recommendation. So this, this other jurisdiction that I represent is, they're just employing best practices. They're, they don't interpret and, and it's our position that there are no county mandates in terms of what you do at pools or anywhere else.
So if that's the case, I think.
And that's where I'm going.
Yep.
And I appreciated Danidri's passionate editorial as well. But I think based on what Ryan just said, and I think where Mark was kind of headed, was that mask can be optional. You know, I've got a nine-year-old daughter. I'm just using it as an example. If I feel like she needs to wear a mask at a pool until she jumps in the water, so be it. She'll need to bring her own chair, uh, maybe bring a little bag of snacks and some apple juice or whatever. But in my opinion, I think we open a hundred percent and put the onus on the parents, uh, based on what their opinion of our post-pandemic, considering millions of people have been vaccinated, considering some of the information that Danidri spoke to is factual. Um, and you still have, um, the wherewithal to make that decision for your own family and child. But that's where I stand on the pool. If what Ryan is saying, and I know it's correct, but if it's just a recommendation, then we have some latitude, uh, to make that choice considering staffing and so forth. Mark, I get that. But maybe it's four-hour windows instead of two. I don't know.
If, if we end up with enough staff to comfortably, you know, reliably be open eight hours every day, I'm all for it.
Me too.
I, I don't know why we would restrict it otherwise.
So maybe that's the question or the linchpin. When, when do we think we could be fully staffed, Jason and Jim?
Well, we already went through the first hiring cycle. We were well short, so we, um, put it out again. I'm not sure exactly where we're at, but there's also considerations. I know Jason's dealing with, with the software and scheduling and what the expectation is from the people we have hired for what their day's going to look like. So there's other things that we have to work through, but we're, I mean, we've, we've got pretty clear direction from what the council wants, so we, we will do our best to, to make that happen.
Well, obviously, there's going to be some additional cleaning protocols that would have to take place. We're going to continue that, I'm assuming. Um, the masking and the gathering are, are just recommendations, as you said, and there is limitations of liability that's, that has been implemented too, so.
To that point, I'm perfectly fine if we provide the chairs. I'm perfectly fine if we don't worry about those. I mean, it's been shown for, you know, to Danidri's point, over a year that we don't have an issue with it transferring off the, the items, right, by touch, right? Everybody was worried about, you know, letting their bags of groceries sit out for a month in April last year, but not now. Not sit out for a month, but for that month. Um, but.
We'll still be wiping down the equipment like we normally would, correct? I mean.
Well, we wouldn't pause.
We wouldn't pause.
We were going to do the half-hour pause. Correct. That is why we did the sessions was to have that half hour in between because Olathe did something similar last year and it worked. So by utilizing those thirty-minute gaps, and like I said, based on the information we received from the county back in March, it still had social distancing, capacity limits, sanitization, uh, mask when you're not in the water, things like that. But again, we haven't gotten updated information based on, you know, how things have, have changed.
So going back to staffing, Jim and Jason, are we staffed for two-hour increments but not four?
So in a normal year, so let's say twenty nineteen.
Two to four. I don't want to talk about a normal year because we're not in a normal year, unfortunately.
Well, he's talking about overall staffing for.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
So in a normal season, lifeguard season, we carry about ninety.
Okay.
We started this year with about forty-five.
So.
So that was half.
Okay.
Now we're up to maybe fifty-five, maybe sixty.
Okay.
So, and when you, when you do that, if we're, we, you know, they do lifeguarding and then they also do swim lessons as well.
Yes.
So we also have that on the front end and the back end of each day. So that's also something to consider as well.
And, and it's my understanding, and, and Ryan mentioned this a little while ago, everybody's having trouble getting lifeguards.
Well, we're having trouble getting people to work.
Right.
That's a whole nother conversation.
Right.
So I guess what I'm trying to understand is do we have the staffing for a four-hour window versus a two? Or is it ideal to keep it at two and go through the protocols you talked about, which I personally am going to call the county commissioner and, and the chairman and get them to update that data if that's what Jason is working off of to, to free us up. Doesn't help the staffing by any means.
No, it doesn't.
But I'm just trying to understand, is staffing for a two-hour window versus a four-hour window less or the same or more?
I think it's the same, Jason.
Yeah, I would think it's the same. Um, but again, it, it's also going to depend on what we have, you know, for swim lessons on the front end, swim lessons on the back end. We're also trying to offer pool parties as well, private pool parties. So again, you know, trying to navigate this kind of new thing, you know, the two-hour windows are what the, the lifeguards are expecting to start the season with.
Would it, would it, if, if staffing's an issue, would less days be, I mean, are there days, Monday, Tuesday, that took a clear and is busy?
It's, it's all weather dependent, to be honest with you.
Yep.
And we're competing with fast food places that the pay's gone up four dollars from what a typical year would be because nobody can get people to work.
Just to clarify, I, I wouldn't be real at the liability piece shouldn't factor in at all.
Correct.
There is that waiver, uh, in Kansas law that we mentioned. It does have a provision in there that, um, said states that you have immunity provided that you're complying with local health, health regulations.
Correct.
Has it just to do with you?
There are none.
Communications with the county is there are none.
Yep.
We also have the recreational use exception to liability in the Kansas Stormy Act, so I, I, I don't think that should factor into your decision.
Well, if that's the case, then if we have staffing, I think we should open it up.
Jason, can I ask one more question about staffing? It, it, does the number of people affect staffing? I mean, if, if we're at capacity, is, is that more staffing needed? Or is it pretty much you have to have those stations staffed?
Correct. The stations are the same no matter what the capacity is. But we built in those half-hour windows for cleaning those high areas, so to speak.
Sure.
So if we open full staff, we, we would have to figure something out. Full capacity, sorry.
But you still have to have staff there. I mean, even if they're cleaning, they're still there all day, right? They're still the same.
Right. So if you went twelve to two and we have that half-hour window, now your lifeguards are not, obviously working stations, they're clean areas. And then they're back on their rotations for the next session at two-thirty, so to speak.
So practically, you go back to cleaning once a day.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a staffing issue. It's not a virus issue. I mean, as to what I'm hearing.
Jason, can we collect upfront when you register for your twelve to two? In other words, you don't pay at the door, so if you don't show up, we still get your money?
That's what we're doing.
Okay.
Because of the line reservation component.
The only way we would do refunds is if we canceled the weather.
Perfect. So is the consensus a four-hour plus a break or is the cons, what, what's the consensus here?
I don't, if, if we're not going to do personally, I might as well just feel, we have a staff.
I think go back to twenty nineteen protocols and call the day. Is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, yeah, I just.
I would agree with that if we have staffing.
I would agree, contingent of staff.
Any que, any comments?
So the recommendation from the governing body is to open full board, twenty nineteen, deck chairs, full capacity, no time restrictions, day passes only?
Well, we can't, we can't not sell season passes at this point, so.
Really want to be day passes.
And could I, I, throwing this out since we're doing the online, could I buy my day pass ahead of time and walk in? So it's not, because I know sometimes there's a line that circles the parking lot to pay. So could I buy my day pass online ahead of time so I can get that line moving a little bit quicker?
I still think that would be great. Just make it online reservation only.
You're still going to have to check in if you.
Have to check in.
I just think it's maybe closer because it's not taking money.
But it's a lot less than.
Yeah, just a little quicker.
Change money, yeah, exactly.
How much, how much locker?
I don't know if that's possible.
Business did you have?
It's already done.
I mean, the, I mean, are there, are there people that don't have access to online? You know, are there? I don't want to, half a block away is a library.
Well, but we can.
Well, you could do walk-ups.
At the door.
The first time somebody walks up and there's a block line for walk-ups and you can walk right through with a pre-pass.
Yeah, so on a normal, normal day, you have your line for pool passes and your line for day ones.
Okay. Yep.
So we just do standard then? Would be back to the standard twenty nineteen?
Basically, yes. Without, without.
Instead of a season pass, I went ahead and bought a day pass.
Yep.
You bought, you bought five day passes?
I'm, I'm pretty sure we can do that. Let me look at our software. Again, this is new software that we're using this year. But yeah, let me, let me look into that.
Yeah, do you think with, and I know you just said you'll look into it, but with all the changes that you were putting in with the two-hour window, if we open up twenty nineteen like.
Yep.
Are we going to have to delay opening because of software changes now that we're throwing in?
I think we've already.
No, we already did the original delay to June. I'm talking about based on what we just told. Is that going to delay us even further?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Will the pool repair impede any of this?
The next, the next, the next.
That could throw a wrench in everything.
Yeah.
That's something that we're working through.
But we got half the battle to take and care of.
Right. Right.
So we're, we're now. So I've got Matt looking at the total number of hours. Is the government body interested in incentivizing further the hiring of lifeguards by adjusting pay?
Well, what, what's the baseline now?
Jason, you probably know off the top of your head, right? It's ten fifty?
The hourly rate?
I think it's ten fifty.
With the, because typically we do a quarter bump each year for the hourlies. And I believe it's now ten fifty this year.
Okay. We're going to have less, less overall, right? Because we're opening later.
Uh, yeah, we're just opening a week later.
And, and again, that's all weather dependent, yeah.
Forty times fifty guys, two hundred hours.
Are we opening, I, I'm sorry, I don't know this concessions at all?
We are.
Okay.
But it's packaged food, correct? We're not doing, we're not doing hot dogs and other stuff like that.
It's a limited menu.
So we do sub concession employees? Do we have the same number as usual?
Yes, we do.
And did you just have like a underwhelming amount of applicants? I mean, I know in years past, it's been so many applications that, I mean, as.
So the lifeguards, I mean concessions, facility super, uh, facility, facility attendance, things like that, those are, yes, hundreds of them.
Right.
It's the lifeguards. When you lose a year of lifeguards, that really hurts and it's obvious all around the metro.
Because you have to get them back somehow.
Correct.
That's the problem. A lot of them graduated high school or.
So we're probably staffed everywhere except lifeguards at the pool?
Oh, facility managers.
Facility soups were a little low.
Okay.
Uh, but other than that, we're doing pretty good.
Okay.
Now, let's look at the hours that Matt can come up with and maybe circle back around with him and then take a look at what we could do to incentivize.
I'm, 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 I'm interested in, if not a pay bump, maybe a, like a, like a.
One-time bonus.
A bonus or something like that.
Into year bonus for staying.
Correct.
Longevity bonus.
And, and some departments do do that as incentives.
Yep.
And it does work really, really well for retention.
Like if you work X number of hours as lifeguard, then you'll get a, you'll qualify for a bonus.
Jason, what about if, and I use myself as an example, not because I'm a good one, but let's say that I, um, was a lifeguard for you in twenty nineteen. I missed twenty twenty because of the COVID nineteen and I want to come back, but it's just, you know, I'm two years older now. And would we incentivize the returning guards?
We currently don't have anything in place, so whether you're a returner or a first year, it's the same hourly wage.
If we had a returning bonus, just making it up as I go, would that help our pool of applicants?
It would, and I know some other agencies that do some sort of program like that. I just don't know the specific details.
I think if people know that the pool's going to be open, fully open, that might actually incentivize people to come out and be lifeguards too.
Well, because they may, may try to apply somewhere else if they thought they'd get more hours. Well, if we're going to open more hours, then there would be more hours at our pool.
Yep.
I'm trying to figure out the logic of paying extra. Because if we have, if it's a staffing issue and we have enough lifeguards to do whatever we decide to do, right? Fully open or two-hour windows, whatever that actually turns out to be because of the staffing, then we have that. We don't need to pay extra to get the other people because you had to have the same number of lifeguards to man those stations.
Correct, but we're currently thirty down right now.
Yeah, we're on the staff.
So if that's the case, then how are we opening at all? Right? There's a number that we have to have, correct?
There's an operate, an operational number, but we're very flexible with all of our seasonal employees, um, as far as days they can have off. You know, they have summer activities and things like that. It's just, you know, being in, uh, having this magic number that you're comfortable with each year, whether it's lifeguards or umpires, facility supervisors, things like that. Uh, you know, worst-case scenario, if we're missing two or three guards off of certain rotations, then you shut down, say, the, uh, the family slides or the big slides because you, you don't have enough guards for that area. So yes, we have enough to operate, um, but we'd be more comfortable knowing we had numbers similar to twenty nineteen.
Okay, so to that end, that means we can open a hundred percent and maybe some stations at certain times are reduced or closed down, whatever. But I don't know why we would spend extra on a asset, if you will, that loses money every year anyway. We already lose four hundred thousand dollars a year. I don't know why we'd lose even more.
Well, let's look at the numbers before we get excited.
I do have some numbers for you. Well, we can see from the budget spreadsheet, it looks like there's about seventeen thousand, we're going around up to seventeen thousand, six hundred hours for lifeguards. And what we've seen from a recent position, uh, kind of summary is that was ten dollars an hour, so it's about a hundred and seventy-six thousand. Uh, so what, I guess you're looking at.
Uh, so what, I guess you're looking at increasing wages, are you trying to guess like how much of an impact that will be? And what would you want to bump that up to?
Well, before you do that, Matt, what is your number now, Jason, and what is your ideal number? So what's your staffing head count now? And what is your ideal number to, to mark?
As, as far as lifeguards?
Yes.
I think we're around fifty-five.
Yeah.
Be comfortable with eighty.
So at full staffing, it'd be about seventeen thousand dollars.
Right.
To, to increase it by a dollar.
Is a dollar, I mean, do we have any idea what going rate is?
I will tell you, I've got two teenage boys that live in my house, and neither one of them make, well, one makes ten dollars an hour, the other was nine. So ten fifty is actually more than they make at local fast food places and other venues in that kind of age range. So we're already compared to what I should make.
And keeping in mind that this is, keeping in mind this is on a limited basis, so you're talking a three month, a three month window. Um, I would like to, to sit down with Matt and kind of look at that hourly wage, um, compared to what we offered in twenty nineteen, taking twenty twenty off the normal quarter bump, and seeing, you know, financially what kind of impact that would have on our seasonal budget.
Because if seventeen thousand six hundred was fully staffed?
Yes, that was based on numbers from prior years.
Is that, is there a head count associated with that?
There is, it just says seventeen thousand, about six hundred hours.
So Mark, I, I think to your point, I think Jason and Matt need to do some due diligence, and then they can just come back. I think they have support.
Except for coming back after we open the pool, the day we open the pool.
Oh, that's true. I keep forgetting it's May.
So I think they need to have guidance from us now. You know, what's too much?
I mean, if, we're, we're just, we're competing against, I mean, we're not, I guess we're not competing against Alata pools or any other pools for lifeguards, it's just where are they gonna work in town?
Yeah.
So if, if ten is more than they typically make in fast food, I mean, I mean, that's enough. I mean, is it?
I, I would be, if we were looking at some sort of salary increase, I'd be more happy with, sorry for the wording on that, the end of the year bonus, so that we make sure that the people stick with us, they don't.
Yes.
Get hired, we train them, and then they find a slightly higher paying job. They know that, hey, when the pool closes, if I stuck it out the whole season, I'm gonna get a bonus. I'd be definitely more in favor of that idea as opposed to an hourly wage.
Oh, no.
Increase, 'cause then, let's say we increase it this year, throwing out a number, eleven dollars, that gets us people, well, next year, do we have to budget for eleven fifty, eleven twenty-five? Now we're way higher, we can't start, oh, you worked for us last year, but this year we're gonna pay you less.
Yeah.
Nobody's gonna come back, so I'm, I'm more in favor of a one-time bonus situation.
So say they work two hundred for more hours, we give them a two hundred dollar bonus?
Yeah, what's the definition of longevity in the swimming pool summer industry?
That's Jason's area of expertise.
I would have to look at what other agencies offer their seasonal staff.
I don't think they have, a lot more than two hundred hours between now and the end of August.
And we.
Between, between vacations and stuff and the rotation that you normally have.
Right, and it, and again, it, it depends on how many days of the year we're open, you know, how many, yeah, some kids go out of town, you know, for vacations, things like that.
I think it should be like seventy-five percent of available hours work or something like that, if that's what we're gonna do.
We, and just so you know, we did restructure the management portion and job titles and things over there, so there are different hourly wages. So, um, yeah, I would like to sit down with Matt and look at those.
Yeah.
And provide you guys with a couple of options, if that would be okay?
Mark, go ahead, I think you have something.
I'm good with comparing to others and making sure that we're competitive. Same job, though, not fast food and fry cook, okay? And to that point, regardless of what happened last year or this year, whatever that competitive pay is, not because it's inflated for something to do with COVID, is what we should do, in my opinion. Because we don't need to pay extra just for this instance, because the people partaking at the pool can see, hey, we don't have enough lifeguards because of X, Y, Z, and then they can apply next year, right? There's, we don't need to throw good money at a bad one.
Your, your opinion is nothing, will you stay with what we've got?
Competitive, so if that means we need to go up to twenty-five cents, right, one for twenty and one for twenty-one, and that is what everybody else is comparably? Sure, leave it there, nothing extra.
So at twenty-five cents, based on the seventeen thousand six hundred number, that's about forty-four hundred bucks.
Yes, we're not talking about.
Well, that's also fully staffed, if we're not, so.
I understand, I understand. And your starting wage for this year is what, for lifeguards?
I believe it's ten fifty.
Ten fifty.
So it'd be ten seventy-five.
So can we get this out by Friday Minute memo?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we can use social media, I mean, if we put out that, that we can open full time or, or to some degree.
But we need lifeguards.
That we need lifeguards, we'll get some help with recruiting people, so.
So to make it easy, what I'm gonna suggest is just have a not to exceed, N T E, on the hourly rate by, by a quarter, on top of what Jason just said. We know what that number is, it's a high side number, because we're not gonna be seventeen thousand six hundred hours, 'cause we're gonna be shut down for a week of a normal season, and of course, that's contingent on the plumbers and all that good stuff.
Well, we'd all, also have to determine what the daily rate's gonna be, so.
I'll let you guys do that. But that, that would be my recommendation, just to get these guys going.
But the day rates, the day rates, understanding a lot, most people buy the seasonal passes.
Right.
Which is a very discounted number, now we're going to day passes, we'll probably have to discount the day passes to a certain extent. Will we not?
Unnecessarily.
That's Jason's area of expertise.
I, I don't know if you're gonna get much difference between ten fifty and ten seventy-five, I could be way wrong, but, uh, it seems like if we're gonna put it out there and say, hey, if you wanna partake in all of the amenities of the pool, you need to show up and be a lifeguard, I think that's how you put it out there, and if, like I said, if it's not open a cer- certain section, so be it.
Another op- another option we could look at, um, is if, to Casey's point, if, if we do look at some sort of end of season incentive or bonus, then that lifeguard rate, if it's competitive with the market, it stays flat each year, just for that position. So we, we could do that if there is some sort of incentive or bonus at the end of the season, yeah.
I mean, that would help us in any season.
Yeah.
No matter COVID or whatever else we're in the corner.
Let us keep our lifeguards longer.
I agree.
'Cause they do tail off towards the end.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna graduate and work one more year before they go to college.
If you set it at hours too, then it gives them more incentive to not have another weekend plan, or, I mean, it keeps them more motivated to work through the week to get to, to that hourly.
Also.
All right, sounds like you got directions then.
So what's the direct, what?
I think Jason's sitting over there going, what's the direct, right?
Oh, I thought, I thought direction here.
Well, is it?
We're gonna keep, we're gonna, we're gonna, looking at the not to exceed for.
That was my recommend.
For budget, for budget number that we would look at, we'll get some updates from the Friday Minute memo as to what the actual numbers would look like for the different scenarios. We will, we will investigate a end of year bonus structure that.
I thought it was one or the other.
No, I, what I, but what I'm saying is that, is that we will make that determination, you know, at the, at the end of this process.
So Matt and Jason, do you have any idea what you need to look at?
Um, we're gonna get together, we're gonna look at different options, we're gonna look at both the incremental wage increase, and we're also gonna look at the end of year bonus, and bring it back to you, and you guys can decide what option you like best.
That's exactly.
But are we gonna have enough time?
Yes.
So we open on June fifth, right, and our next meeting is June seventh.
I can get a consensus through email.
And just to be clear, open, full capacity, twenty nineteen, day passes, no, no season passes.
Correct.
Okay. I believe that's all I have.
That's. And we hadn't even gone to you yet. Uh, utility, is Gans Garcia, anything from ya?
Nothing.
Okay, um, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna skip Jason, sorry. Unless you had more, you have anything more about Fourth of July or anything like that?
No, I think I'm good for tonight, appreciate it.
All right, excellent.
He can't take any more abuse.
Yeah.
I think we're just, we are, we are battling Mother Nature with weekends, and so, um, we lost Sunday of Hawaiian hipfests this last week, which is one of the largest tournaments.
Yeah.
We did get Saturday, and so, uh, we, we still are planning on starting, uh, baseball, softball, T-ball Tuesday, June first. So schedule should be coming out this week for, for those. And our numbers look really good, very similar to twenty nineteen, we're almost eight hundred kids.
Wow, that's great. All right, economic development or community development, uh, Mr. Knoppick?
I'm gonna give my time to the gentleman for parks and recreation.
Understood, understood. Public Works, Mr. Hedley?
Uh, we will be having a Public Works and Accessibility Advisory Committee, or P W A C. On twenty-four May at seven PM at the Gardner Senior Center.
Great, that's a, that's a, that's a group that hasn't met in a long time, so that's, it's good to get them started, thank you. All right, uh, council have anything for staff? I'm gonna skip Mark entirely. Um, Tori, you got anything for us?
Uh, no, I don't, thanks for asking.
Okay, um, Councilman Verzic?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I do, first I want to say.
Just skipped you. Just kidding, go on.
I thought I had the floor, sir. Uh, thank you, Jason, for hanging in there with us, uh, we appreciate what you do, we appreciate, uh, how you handle the hurdles that are thrown at you, whether it be soccer, T-ball, swimming pools, et cetera, so I just quickly wanted to say thank you. Um, the first question I had, um, was, did we get the senior class a check, or where did that come down to?
Yeah, so we, um, are donating three thousand dollars to Project Red. So they, um, I, I can't remember her name, you might remember, I notified them.
Missy something?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
So they should have a check ready for tomorrow.
Yep, and we're taking that actually out of our state of the city budget item, because we didn't have a in-person state of the city, so that provided us.
I'm glad we found the money.
Yes, yes, no problem.
Can't we change that now, that we have no mass guidance, do it in person?
Uh, we've already done work on that, sorry. All right, is there, is there anything else?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Um, I've got a couple of other items. Um, I'm still hearing from the residents, and Jim and I have talked about this, along Cheyenne or one hundred and eighty-third, westbound, as you go into the threshold of LPKC. Uh, I know that Chief Belcher is supporting, uh, kind of, uh, monitoring and so forth and so on, and I even, for giggles, one day, uh, followed a officer pulling over a tractor trailer, he ended up in LPKC as we wrote the ticket, so, thought that was interesting. Um, but I'm still of the opinion, and I do have a, a meeting with Fire Chief Kirk Wednesday at nine thirty to discuss this, and I gave him a heads up, but I'm still of the opinion that we can put some sort of overhead barrier, or some sort of barrier, maybe a better word, um, to stop or severely limit until they rip it out, that truck traffic, uh, eighteen wheeler truck traffic in particular. Firehouse eighty-one will be coming online here in the near couple of months, uh, which is a beautiful facility. Um, and that would give the fire district another venue, if you will, to react to fires or emergencies at LPKC, while Firehouse, what is that, one twenty-two, I believe, would support it coming down one hundred and eighty-third, obviously, which would be the, you know, best line of sight based on where the emergency is. So I'm gonna meet with Fire Chief, I know Jim has been putting some effort into this, which I appreciate, but we need to do something for our citizens, and for that, the youth of that community that's going across the street, there's a pool, there's an HOA pool right off the corner there, uh, and I just wanted to bring that back up and let the council know kind of my opinion, um, as well as my efforts. Because again, the new ladder truck that was bought is ten feet, ten inches. Uh, a common height for an eighteen wheeler with container would be twelve foot, five inches to thirteen point five inches. So, you know, we're talking about a couple of feet.
Like eleven foot six, I think, is what it, what it typically is when those barriers go up.
Some sort of barrier.
So my question to you, Councilman, is you'd have to have that right at the very entrance on the westbound side. You can't have it fifty yards or a hundred yards down, because if you do that, they're gonna make that turn, and then they have no way to get out.
No, it's always been the intention, and I use the word threshold, to put it at the threshold of the two cities that come together.
Well, that's too far west, though. If you're coming west from center, you're not gonna hit that barrier until you're all the way down at the end by Poplar, and by that time, you have no place to turn around.
Okay.
That's, that's the problem.
Good discussion.
They only have to screw up and have to turn around once before they learn their lesson there.
Well, that's one trucker, but not all of them. The long haul truckers that come through there, they're from out of area, they don't do the route very often, and it, they'll run into it over and over.
Well, we could also reach out to Google maybe and see if we can update that route, I don't know.
We had talked about that with the county. We had talked about that with the county, but.
But something needs to be done.
No, I, I agree.
And we can talk about that as well with, with the Southwest Johnson County Area Plan, when we address that, it, it, a multi-jurisdictional, uh, task force to revisit that and look at traffic and how it moves around Gardner Edgerton and, and parts of the county, so we'll make sure we include that as well.
Thank you, Jim, and good, good input, uh, Mayor.
Well, I just feel like there, there's a lot of issues here that go beyond just the, the restriction, and I understand the threshold will be a good place if they're coming east, although the problem is the trucks that are, that are giving us the biggest problem are not the ones coming east, they're the ones going west.
Correct.
And so we'd have to have either two barriers, one at center and one at the threshold, or have some other means of, of making sure that they are very clear that, you know, they don't have clearance, if that means putting a sign or something like that.
Well, I mean, we have signage, and good point, uh, Todd, but, uh, again, this is good conversation.
A lot of times they don't, just ignore it.
Um, yeah, I've sat behind them and watched them make a left-hand turn, I know that they can see the same sign I can, because they're disshovelled as it is, again, just based on body language, as I'm sitting there watching the driver, you know? Um, nonetheless, good, good conversation, and I wanna support that part of the community and figure out a way to, to stymie that. Um, the next question I had was, um, what is the?
Actually, hold on just a second, I think that she had something to.
Oh, sorry, Chief.
No, you're fine, Councilman. Uh, just, you know, gonna let the council know that we at the PD are continuing to, to have officers in that area to deal with those violations, and making stops as we can on those violations of those trucks, and, um, you know, we understand the pain that those, uh, the people that live in those neighborhoods are going through, and, and we're doing what we can to, to have our people out there, uh, doing those truck inspections and stops, so we're, we're gonna keep doing that.
I see you guys out at the, uh, the old Alata Health Facility, you usually have a person right there watching traffic going into that area, so I, I commend you guys, you guys are working hard on that.
Yeah, absolutely, and like I said earlier, I've, I've watched them pull people over, so that's great. Uh, the last item that I had was, I just wanted to, um, you know, Mark, uh, provided a good action item for me, uh, back to the fire department board appointee appointment, uh, and so I wanted to kind of come back now that I've got my feet under me. Um, I wanted to tell everybody that the fire board meeting, uh, as of last Tuesday, we now meet in person. Uh, I believe at that moment in time, again, we discussed that without the labor in it, but at that moment in time, masks were required. Uh, but we do have in-meeting, uh, in-person board meetings, uh, there at the Firehouse at New Century. So I would encourage everybody to come out, uh, it's the second Tuesday of each month at seven o'clock. Um, like I said, I do have a, um, meeting with Fire Chief Kirk, and the Senate Bill thirteen is affecting the Firehouse as well, and that's why Maury was at the, uh, at the meeting, and they're trying to figure out, uh, I don't wanna get into detail, because I don't think that I have it clear in my own head, so I don't wanna misspeak, but they're trying to figure out how their policies, uh, the county policies align with SB thirteen, et cetera. Um, and obviously, we've talked about TIFs, and we know that much of LPKC is TIF-laden.
Yes, it is.
So I'll, uh, I'll let that group figure that out, and then the board can obviously intervene as necessary. But again, I do wanna invite everybody out, second Tuesday of the month, seven, at the Firehouse at New Century. Uh, parking's on the north and the east side of the building, um, and then I will provide more information, um, as it's relative, from an agenda perspective, as, as this unfolds.
That's awesome, thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, uh, Casey, anything?
No, nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, uh, Council Vice President? If I could speak. I decided not to.
Uh, Randy, is that live streamed by chance?
No, sir, not at this point, um, it crossed my mind, I'll have to look into it again, I have a meeting with Fire Chief Kirk.
No, sir, not at this point, um, it crossed my mind, I'll have to look into it, again, I have a meeting with Fire Chief Kirk Wednesday at nine thirty, so I'll add that to my talking points.
Thank you for the update. I don't have any, okay, uh, Council President?
Yeah, uh, just curious if we have any, uh, numbers or, uh, from the first day of large item pickup?
Oh, yes.
Yes, we do, uh, so on the first day of large item pickup, they picked up the north side of town, and they picked up forty-seven tons. So, uh, somewhat lower than what we expected, uh, we went back to the contractor and asked what the, kind of, their, their sense was of, of, uh, both participation as well as, uh, kind of what drove the numbers down, participation-wise, best estimate we've got between them and, and my Public Works guys going and looking around is about one in twenty houses participated, and, uh, the primary driver, who, the contractor, uh, the lower numbers was construction agreement.
Yep.
They said that's basically the difference.
So it sounds like they're following the restrictions, which is a very good thing.
That is correct, yeah, the, and citizenry followed the restrictions pretty well.
All right, anything else?
No, nothing else.
All right, great, well, I don't have much, I think we have kind of beaten some of these topics to death, uh, I just appreciate people's patience while we're trying to figure out these protocols, everything is changing quickly, uh, but it is nice to know that we're getting back to normal in a lot of ways, so. Um, that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, we don't have executive sanctions.
Second.
Motion, Dean and Second Baldwin, that we adjourn, all those in favor, can I say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? We are adjourned.